Okay, hello everyone. Welcome to our school committee meeting. Will you please join me in saluting the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all. Great, thank you. The mayor cannot attend, he's at an opium event with the governor, so he sends his press. Hearing of visitors. Oh, okay, alright. Okay. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. It's where we bundle routine business and it's the opportunity for the school committee to pull any one particular item out to discuss. Anyone on the committee wish to remove an item? No? I do see a couple of scholarships. Madam Superintendent, would you like to comment on the two scholarships?
I will. The first scholarship is from Education First Scholarship. It's $3,000 to the first place recipient and $1,000 to the running up, excuse me, runner up. And the eligibility requirements are they must be a senior graduating from Brockton High School, complete an essay. So as always, we're so pleased to receive these scholarships for our students. And the second one is a little more personal to me, and I'm sure a number of you around the table here, is in honor of Richard J. Sergi. Dick Sergi, many of you know, started out teaching in the Brockton Public Schools. I worked with him many years ago when he was the department head of Social Studies at the time, North Junior High. He went on to become the executive director of the Brockton Housing Authority. He always cared about children, certainly our families and the community. So we're very pleased that the scholarship is in the amount of $1,000 to be awarded to a Brockton resident, high school graduate, accepted at a community college or university.
Wonderful, okay. Why don't we have a motion to approve all of the items, A through G?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Great. Okay. We have a communications from Mr. McGary. Is that the Elections Commission request?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe this is for the next year, and this will cover all of the elections. As you know, Mr. McGary works very closely with us. We've made some improvement in the polling places where a number of times, school has been in session, depending on if it's a primary or a general election. And I just, I recommend that you approve the polling places for this calendar year.
Just one additional note, there will be a special election, and I believe that would be for the rep seat on February 2nd, 2016. Three polling locations are requested, and so that would be the...
Seat vacated by Representative Michael Brady.
Correct.
Now Senator Brady.
Yes, exactly. So, okay. Can we have a motion to approve? Mrs. Joyce?
The 2016, the use of the 12 schools for a presidential election. Point of thought, do you think 12 schools on that day are...
We normally do, and we would consider that when we do the...
Or is there a new calendar?
It'll be...
That'll be, that'll be the calendar that we'll discuss when in May? Is that when we do, actually do it? April, May?
We start in April for the first reading, I think.
Yeah, yeah. So we definitely, I believe, will...
12 going off.
Right.
But not for the one on February 2nd, correct?
Correct. It's only three schools. And it's a smaller election. It's not, you know, a presidential, so...
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jordan?
I'd like to make the motion, since we can't actually make it.
Yep, okay.
Move to accept the request from the Elections Commission for the use of the schools, including the 2nd of February.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Thanks. Right. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, great. Okay. Next item. Report of Superintendent of Schools.
Let me go to the Learning and Teaching Report. I know I have to be very quick this evening, so a couple of things I would like to share. We are very, very pleased, and we talked about this at a subcommittee meeting, but certainly the information was embargoed. So we did get the results back from Park, and I will say, Dr. Cancel cautions me all the time. It is a work in progress from going from MCAS to Park and looking at the data, but we are very, very pleased, for the first time certainly in our district, we have two Level 1 schools. And as far as I'm concerned, this should have been top news. East Middle School over on the east side of Brockton, I taught there for many years. I'm always proud to go back and visit. A lot of hard work with our leadership team there, Dr. Silver and her team. We couldn't be prouder of the work that has been done there. And also, I had the opportunity to go to, the Kennedy School had their Professional Development Day on Thursday when the embargo was lifted, and Brian Rogan, the Principal Rogan at the school unveiled it to the teachers. And again, you could just see on their faces how pleased they were for the students, for the families, and all the hard work. We have two Level 1 schools in a large urban district. I'd like to see all schools Level 1 schools. We do have quite a few Level 2 schools, and we're pleased with all our schools, because I think we all understand, you know, we have a lot of challenges in this district, but our students certainly continue to rise to the occasion. Our teachers are dedicated and continue to defy our demographics. So we will be doing a presentation after the 1st of the year, and you'll be able to see what our challenges are. We're bringing leadership teams in. We're talking about those best practices, and hopefully, we can take a look at that as we prepare for budget season. That's important. So that's my update there, and I do want to tell you under, you see the district's safety and security. We all know that, and as you look around the country, this continues to happen, that there are threats, and it's become difficult when you're talking about social media and the way information travels, whether threats that come before us are credible. But I will have to tell you that we dealt with a threat at Brockton High School, was not a credible threat. We actually found a student that had hacked into another student's Facebook account. There were very serious consequences for what happens. And what I want to bring to your attention is, on Friday, up at Brockton High School, we brought every single class into the auditorium, starting with the freshmen. Principal Wolder addressed the students, and you could hear a pin drop. She spoke to them, again, about what their responsibility is in all of this, because they certainly are part of the solution for us. They see things that could happen. They need to make us aware. I was there, I addressed the group. Deputy Superintendent Thomas, who we were very fortunate, was on Governor Deval Patrick's Safety Commission. We talked to the students about the training, that our teachers will keep them safe, that we all need to work together. And also Lieutenant Mills spoke to our students, as did the big hit of the night was Officer Clifford, our school resource officer. They loved him. It goes to show the relationships that they develop in middle school. He was a coach for a lot of the students. His son is actually a senior at the high school. So very pleased with the presentation for every single class. As I said, the students were attentive, and again, they make me proud every time I see what they actually do. I want to thank Principal Wolder for putting this together, and I think it'll be very effective as we move forward. I also want to say to the parents that we are looking at having a parent meeting on January 19th. I will be addressing it with the new school committee members. It is a school committee night. I'm proposing to have the parents in the auditorium between 6:30 and 7:30, where we'll address them with some of the same things we shared with our students, and we'll open this up to the district. We'll answer questions, and then hopefully, start the meeting at 7:30 on that evening. So we figure it would be about an hour with our parents. So we will get word out there, and we will share that with them.
Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, 'cause I was gonna bring this up. In the meetings that we've brought up now, seems to be an inordinate amount of inappropriate behavior happening throughout the system, unfortunately. Of course, around the country, we're having that, and see that the principal at the high school already took care of that particular building. If it's possible, could we do the same with the rest of our buildings as quickly as possible? I know that's a lot of work, but given what's been happening, seems like we've been getting reports on a regular basis that behavior is not acceptable within the system. So a reminder of some kind, however you decide to do that, throughout the whole system, so that all the children in the system know what's appropriate to do within the school system as a whole.
One of the things, Mr. Jordan, and I think you make a good point, that we continually need to speak to our students, you know, they're part of our Brockton Public School family. I think when you look at the ages of students, we weren't even sure this was going to make sense to bring over 1,000 students into that auditorium, and I'm telling you, it was a big success. And I'm very, very pleased with the attention. I hope that your students, that have students here, went home and spoke to you. I asked Mr. Minicello, and can I share what your son said?
Sure.
Basically, he said, you know what? What we heard today was really common sense. When you talk about the young students, and Principal Wolder also mentioned to me, as we go forward, one of the great assets we have is our teacher in the classroom, who connects to these students every day. Having those discussions in small groups about behavior, how we support each other. So when you're talking young students in elementary or middle school, I'll certainly talk to the executive directors, the deputy superintendents, and we'll come up with a plan, probably in smaller groups, maybe come up with a kind of a, you know, targeted points that we want to share, depending on the age and the appropriateness for those students. But again, it was a big success.
Right.
And we have the District Capacity Project, that when I became superintendent so very long ago, I believe that was one of the first groups that I started to work with, and it was a project already in progress.
Time flies when you're having fun.
Time flies when you're having fun, that's correct. So I believe they have a presentation for us this evening, and Kelly Jones and Kim Gibson are gonna lead us off. Is there a PowerPoint?
There is.
Okay.
I don't go anywhere without a PowerPoint.
Now, would you be introducing it, or...
I shouldn't get it over to you.
Okay.
Who is the PowerPoint's Kelly? Ready? Yep. Good evening, everyone. So this is going to be a quick update for you, considering this is one of your last meetings. We wanted to make sure you were updated before you left the school committee. So as you know, we started the District Capacity Project back in 2012, November 2012, and it's a labor management initiative, which is under the Massachusetts Education Partnership, and the lead agency under that is the Rennie Center for Education, Research, and Policy. Many of the districts, the focus of it is that you develop initiatives to address student achievement in the respective districts. Our focus here in Brockton has been to increase the dual-language programming, and we've been building on the successful two-way program at the Mathiola George School and the interest of the community. We had done some surveying of the community about three years, two to three years ago now. So this is culmination of that. Our current team, we're always in flux. We have June Saban-McGuire, who's the Executive Director of Elementary Education, Kim, myself, Kim Gibson. Lori Silver's joined us. Elana DeFalco, who is currently an ESL teacher at the Raymond School, the BEA Vice President. Vula Rumus is one of the department heads for the bilingual department. Karen Watkins-Watts is one of the grants people. Kelly Jones, Director of Bilingual Education. And then we still have our state facilitator, Ray Shirtliff, who's been here before, and he kind of guides us and keeps us on track to make sure we're addressing all the issues that we really said we would do back in 2012.
Now, the reason we chose to focus on dual-language programming is based on the extensive research on the educational impact on English language learners in particular. And this is just a quick graph from the Thomas &amp; Collier Study. It is a longitudinal study on educational performance for English language learners based on a variety of programming options. And while this one is from 2009, they've recently released a 2014 version, which almost mirrors the 2009 version. And you can see at the top, the dual-language programming, which includes content ESL, is the green performance, and they far exceed any other program model for English language learners. And for our native English-speaking community, there is a great benefit of being bilingual. So, quick, you have a couple of research studies in your packet from last weekend, but research shows that they score up to 25 percent points higher on their SATs. They perform better on measures of verbal and nonverbal intelligence. They have greater cultural flexibility and sensitivity towards other. They have larger vocabularies, higher developed listening and retention skills. They perform better on tests of reading and math. They display more highly-developed thinking and executive functioning, so that's managing frustration and tasks. They possess skills critical to the national defense. They are prepared better to contribute to local, state, and national economies. And there has been some recent health benefits research out there, that there's a decreased rate of Alzheimer's in bilingual people, and they actually have a quicker stroke recovery. And we are capitalizing as well. So there's the educational benefits for English language learners and native English-speaking peers. And we're also capitalizing on a movement nationwide to increase dual-language programming. In 2011, there were an estimated 2,000 programs for dual-language instruction, and Greg Roberts, who is the World Languages and Dual Immersion Specials for the Utah State of Education, has coined the term "monolingualism is the illiteracy of the 21st century." And Utah has been a great leader in dual-language immersion, and we're going to be working closely with them moving forward. So last fall, and we updated you at the December retreat about a year ago, we wrote a grant for an Innovation School Planning Grant through DESI, and we were awarded it. And so, in the spring, we combined, we brought over many district members representing middle and high school and elementary school levels. We had teachers, paraprofessionals, bilingual community facilitators, and school administrators. And some of them are actually here tonight to see the outcome of their work. And what we did is, when we were thinking about moving forward on dual-language programming, we broke into four separate groups. One was looking at staffing, schedule, and organizational structure. One was really looking at curriculum. One committee really looked at what support there was in the community and the international connections that could be made. And then one was looking at possible funding sources. So the team recommended and developed a prospectus for an innovation school, and these are some of the components that they included, based on their research and their work. So in programming, they proposed Portuguese and French immersion programs, beginning in kindergarten, with an enrollment by a lottery. They wanted to ensure that there was common planning, expanded learning, some community and international partnerships for students and their families. To structure in grades 2 through 5, an opportunity for newcomers, who are newly arrived to our community, who already have those target language skills from their home country, and if space allows, to enable them to continue that language development while they are acquiring English, and ultimately, hoping to lead to a K-12 sequence, leading to a seal of biliteracy. And we are working collaboratively with the Foreign Language Department to start to develop that right now for our two-way program. In terms of curriculum instruction, they recommended a 50-50 instructional model. So 50 percent of their instructional time will be in English, and 50 percent of their instructional time would be in the target language, be that Portuguese or French. They recommended utilizing the great work that the Utah Immersion Programs has done. Utah already has immersion programs using a 50-50 model in Portuguese, in French, in German, in Chinese, and in Spanish, with tens of thousands of students participating. They recommended having an intercultural, international cultural themes and approaches, assessment of and in both languages, so we can really be teaching towards proficiency in both languages, incorporating ESL for the English language learners, incorporating parent language development in both languages, so our families that might need English as a second language support, they would receive it, but also, the parents who would like to develop his or her own language skill in that target language. And then identifying cultural events, including Skyping, having sister schools, pen pals, and things like that. So the Community and International Partnership Committee did amazing work, reaching out to a variety of partners to see if they would be willing to support it, and the response was overwhelming. Bridgewater State University has been a partner in this from the beginning. They were part of the committee that wrote the grant and support the planning. So they are broad partners with us on this project. We also, for specific content expertise, we really, we reached out to MATSOL, which is the Massachusetts Association of Teachers and Speakers of Other Languages. They are the main professional association, and they were also partners in the planning grant writing process and in the planning process that went on. We have DESI up there because it is an initiative of the Office of English Language Acquisition and Academic Achievement of DESI, which is the bilingual department of DESI, long name for bilingual department, to promote the growth of dual-language programming in Massachusetts. So they have been following our work very closely and have reached out to us to be partners in that. We have the Utah State Department of Education, who enabled us to become a part of this project called the Foreign Language Acquisition Network. Brockton is now a member of FLAN, and they have provided a lot of support in terms of curriculum and materials for a Portuguese immersion program. We also have institutional partners in our community, right here in Massachusetts. The Cape Verdean Association of Brockton, the South Shore Haitians United for Progress Space, which is a support program for adolescent and community engagement, the Brockton Neighborhood Health Center, and Harbor One Bank, all wrote letters of support for this project and committed to helping us move forward in offering dual-language programming and building biliteracy skills to help the community. We also reached out to the consulate generals of Massachusetts, and we have letters of support from Brazil, and France, and Haiti, and Quebec, on moving forward to support us in implementing a dual-language programming here in Brockton. Cape Verde was very, very receptive, and they have pledged their support orally. We just don't have that in writing yet, and I'm sure they will be active partners with us as we move forward in implementing dual-language programming. We also have business partnerships. These are some of the community, the organizations and businesses locally, that have seen the value of building biliteracy skills for the community and for the business of Brockton, and they have all also reached out and offered letters of support, and they have also offered to be partners with the programs moving forward.
So for the fall of 2016, the plan is to actually pilot the Portuguese immersion program. Community forums will be scheduled in the springtime to educate the community on this. Curriculum development and staffing will begin. There'll be collaborative planning that will continue from the groups that we previously started under the planning grant. The enrollment will be done by lottery. There'll be two kindergarten classes, one English and one Portuguese, and they will be housed at the Raymond School for the fall. Moving forward from there, and planning for 2017 and beyond, and it's a plan at this point, there would be a grade 1 of the Portuguese program continuing at the Raymond School, with the addition of the kindergarten class of the French immersion program, so the English side and the French piece. And then the continuation of the collaboration with the Foreign Language Department to strengthen a K-12 sequence of the programming within the Spanish, Portuguese, and French programs. So that is our plan as of today. So if you, we want to thank you for taking the time, and if you have any questions for us, let us...
I'm gonna exit, and then I'm gonna turn it off.
We're sort of starting, or launching the program in Portuguese at Raymond. Is it kind of the expectation or thought that the French and Spanish would also, like they would all exist in the same school? Or like, we'd have several schools hosting like a language thread?
I think the way the prospectus was written was to have the languages together, to have a real international focus. So the perspective talks about the International School of Brockton. However, we, there's a lot of building that has to go on before anything like this would happen, and there are, this is, this is taking place in a greater context about facilities and moving the district forward. So I don't think any of us at this time, you know, could say ultimately where, what the configuration would look like, but it was the belief of the team that having this collaboration amongst the programs, and having it be really focused on dual-language proficiency would assist all of the language strands together.
And so then, that same plan would follow into middle school, presumably?
Yes.
Where we'd identify, at what point, kind of that first cohort makes their way through the system, we'd identify a middle school for them...
Right.
...to exist in, and then kind of look to expand the other dual-language programs?
Yes. We currently have the Spanish dual-language program in the middle school, has been for many, many years at the Plouffe. And so we're able to kind of build on the strengths and the lessons from the really popular Spanish program to plan for a program for the...
Whatever book...
For the French and Portuguese programs.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for having me sharing that with us. As far as this strand, so immediately, you're looking, in 2017, you're looking to build one strand, grade by grade? So you'll have a full strand?
Yes.
Of one classroom, 25 students?
There will be 50 students. So there will be...
Oh, because you have two classrooms?
Exactly.
Okay. Down the road, how do you see this dual-language program affecting our, like our traditional foreign language programs? And our, and also our dual, the, what is it? The Spanish, yeah, the immersion program that we have existing?
So what I can see it happening is actually bridging and bringing the Foreign Language Department and the Bilingual Department even in more close working relationship with each other. Because right now, we have students who come in as English language learners, who the focus is on only mastering English and not thinking about their, their already very important and valued literacy skills that they come in with.
Exactly.
And so, in the Spanish program, we do have heritage language programs in Spanish. So for students who are coming, already speaking Spanish, they have an opportunity in middle and high school to be able to continue that. The hope is, is that we'll be able to replicate that for Portuguese and French. So we'll be able to graduate students who are bilingual and biliterate in multiple languages, which will really be an asset for the global economy and for getting into institutions of higher education. So I think it'll, it'll, it'll enable the Foreign Language and the Bilingual Department to work in even more closely relationship.
Do you see this as replacing our traditional foreign language options for students down the road? As we know, when we were in school, we took French. I took two years of French. I don't know any of it today, so it really did nothing for me. So by changing the whole concept and the way it's taught, in a dual-language program, do you see that as eventually taking the place of the traditional foreign language options?
I don't think it will take the place. I think it will be another pathway.
Okay.
Because we can only serve so many students in this program. You know, Illinois and North Carolina, they're moving only to these dual-language programming options for their linguistically diverse populations. We're not at that place yet in Massachusetts. So as of right now, we, certain students would be able to, would be taken, would take advantage of the dual-language programming, and they would have a level of language proficiency that will far exceed those of the students who are beginning their foreign language instruction in middle school.
Absolutely, yeah.
So it will be a complement and an addition to it, but I don't ever foresee us taking away any of the opportunities for students who are not fortunate so much to be chosen through that lottery.
To be put in that program, yeah.
Yeah.
Because you can't serve all the students.
Right.
You have to have those traditional programs in place.
Exactly.
I understand that. So by, one final question, by, through this partnership with the ESE, does that open us up to more grant opportunities by having that partnership in place?
I would hope so. We're in conversation, I'm gonna look at Lori right, a little bit right now. We're in conversation right now with the state and some of our institutional partners, MATSOL and Bridgewater State University, about some grant opportunities. These are highly competitive grants... These are highly competitive grants, but we will certainly try to make use of any opportunity that we have. And we have been working to try to have grants to support the development and the expansion of programs like this. The Ola Office at DESI is really, is really strong in its proposition that dual immersion programming is the wave of the future, and this is where we need to be, we need to be putting our efforts. Whether or not they will be giving us funds to be able to support that is another question.
Well, once again, Brockton is at the forefront.
Yes.
We're leading the way for other communities, so hopefully we'll be rewarded.
I hope so too.
Yeah. Thank you for the update, I appreciate it.
Because in coming on one of the, and this is happening in a number of districts, each district really picked their particular project. So Brockton has stayed the course. This involved collaboration with the school committee, you know, regular updates. It involved the, working with our BEA partners and working with our school administration. So I think a lot of compliments for those of you that really stayed the course and have made this a priority. Kim, I thank you, I know it was always a priority with you. Kelly and all the group. June stepped in when it became a little bit difficult for me to attend all of the meetings. I'm updated regularly, and I think this will be a real success, you know, certainly in our district and for our families. And I think we've all seen that when we have seen the medical interpretation program here. When I sit here and look at the students graduate and look at the job placements and how they're supporting our community, I think this will really make a difference focusing on these languages that are prevalent in our own community here.
If I might close, I will say one of the things that makes Brockton remarkable is that we see the diversity of our community as an asset and that they have valuable, valuable skills that can lead our community and our state and the global interconnected world that we live in towards the future. And we're really preparing our kids for the 21st century skills through programs such as this.
And there is not a week that goes by that Kelly doesn't send us some literature showing that this in fact will be a success for us students. She's well researched and we're well informed.
That's true. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it? Oh, yeah. Nothing to refer to.
So under new business, the first item is the ratification of the MOA between the Brockton School Committee and paraprofessionals. I believe Mrs. Joyce, you were the chair of that subcommittee. Could you tell us who served with you and also just give us a report? I see two MOUs.
Two MOAs.
Yep, MOAs.
For the Brockton Education Paraprofessional Association. It's the final contract negotiated, correct? And I'd like to recognize Alicia Clark, both sides.
Get the old one back.
And Ozzy Jordan and all the hard work they put into this, both sides. We had a lot of stops and stops with these negotiations with different members coming and going on both sides, but we trudged through and we got through it. And I think we came up with a fair, equitable contract that serves the Brockton School District very well, as well as our hard-working paraprofessionals. So I would like to make a motion to accept the memorandum of agreement between Brockton School Committee, the Brockton Education Paraprofessional Association for the time period of September 1st, 2014 to August 31st, 2015.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, second MOA, Mrs. Joyce?
Second MOA is also between Brockton School Committee and the Brockton Education Paraprofessional Association. And that will run between September 1st, 2015 to August 31st, 2018. It is a three-year agreement.
Did I hear a second? Okay, great. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Okay, wonderful. All right. Next item is the December 15th, 2015 Bid Review Subcommittee. Is that you, Mrs. Wilson? Or is that, oh, that's Judy, okay, Mrs. Sullivan. Mrs. Sullivan?
The Bid Review, thank you. The Bid Review Subcommittee meeting of the Brockton School Committee convened on Tuesday, December 15th at 5:55 in the Rom Little Theater. Mr. Jordan and Mrs. Sullivan were present after discussion of the FY 2016 Refrigeration and Air Conditioning Services bid, which there's three companies that bid on refrigeration and air conditioning. The bid was awarded to Mechanical Air Controls Incorporated, the current company that provides these services for us. A motion was made by Mrs. Sullivan to accept the bid as presented. Mr. Jordan seconded the motion and the vote was unanimous. Mrs. Sullivan moved to adjourn. The motion was seconded by Mr. Jordan and the vote was unanimous. The meeting adjourned at 6:00 PM. The superintendent recommends the following motions to accept the report of the subcommittee as presented and to recommend to the Brockton School Committee to award the following school bid, FY 2016 Refrigeration and Air Conditioning Services bid to Mechanical Air Controls Incorporated.
Would you like to, you made the motion? To accept that?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. The next item is the December 8th, 2015 Curriculum Subcommittee Report where we, that's a committee of the whole. We met over at the R. Nunn Theater at 6:30. We had a very detailed presentation by Superintendent Smith, Mrs. Barry, Dr. Kansell, Mr. Murray, and Mrs. Sabah McGuire about PARC and what went on and the differences between, you know, PARC and MCAS and the successes and the glitches. And there was a, I guess, a tease, a tease from the administration about the results. They wouldn't, they wouldn't, they were playing poker with us, they wouldn't show their hand. But we now heard the good news, obviously. And in that presentation was also a request that we can, basically PARC, we know PARC is coming or some version of it, perhaps it'll be called MCAS 2.0, but the committee basically chose to adopt and be a district that tested the PARC exam so that we could basically have a prelude to what to expect and gave us an opportunity, or gives us an opportunity to better prepare and see what the potential ups and downs of that program are. We basically were informed that, you know, something other than MCAS is coming down the pike. And there was discussion about continuing to maintain the online testing in the current schools that previously participated. So that was basically the presentation with respect to PARC. So we need to take two items of action. The first is basically a motion to maintain the online testing so that we can continue to grow and learn from, you know, what PARC or MCAS 2.0 will have in store for the district. So Andy, could you make the motion to maintain the online testing in the schools that have previously participated in the PARC testing?
Just a point of clarification for our parents, that we will continue to be harmless on themselves through 2019, until 2019?
At this point, 17.
17. So it gives us a couple of years to still work through our own instrumentation of it, especially the online version of it. So that will help us.
And we did not have a choice as far as being a PARC district this spring. For the testing that will go on this spring, we will be a PARC district. Our option was whether we drew paper and pencil in the school or continue online at the five schools we chose last year. Our recommendation is to continue with the five schools that we did the online last year. The other schools will do paper and pencil. But I also want the parents and the community to know that we will continue to integrate technology into the schools. But as far as the testing goes, we will continue to learn from those five schools that took it last year. That's our recommendation, which we have to let the DESE know by December 18th.
I'm glad you said that, because that was a major consideration in our decision to go forward with PARC because we were going to be held harmless. So it gave us an opportunity to, you know, roll it out and find out, like we said, the pros and the cons and do so without any detrimental impact on the district. So, great. So it's been seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right. And then the second piece of that curriculum Subcommittee meeting was a discussion with respect to the Talented and Gifted Program. There is a Subcommittee that was formed, and they reviewed the elements and the testing that's required currently to enter. In the end of third grade, you would test, right? It's the end of the third grade, isn't it?
Yeah.
The end of third grade, you would have the testing. And they utilize, obviously, a number of different tools. But there was a recommendation from the Subcommittee to discontinue the use of one of the testing tools, which is what, ITBS?
ITBS.
And could you just elaborate a little bit on the ITBS test?
Well, I think it really came down to it's a valuable test, but we already do STAR testing at that grade level and throughout a number of our grades. And with so much testing going on, we felt that we would get the same results from our STAR testing, which we use for benchmark testing.
So in a sense, it would be duplicative.
At this point here, I think it reduces, we'll get the same results, and there are a number of other assessments that we look at.
So there was a recommendation of that Subcommittee to approve and discontinue the use of the ITBS testing tool in the grade three tag selection process. So Mrs. Sullivan, can you make that motion to eliminate the use of the ITBS in grade three tag?
Okay.
Yes.
I make a motion to eliminate the use of the ITBS test?
Replace what?
Grade three.
Replace what, STAR?
And replace it with the STAR testing.
In the tag selection process.
In the tag selection process.
I'm like a priest saying the vows, you know? Like, repeat after me. So, okay, seconded. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? All right, wonderful. Thank you very much. Doing a lot of approving tonight for different reports. Okay, enclosure number 13, I'm very pleased to report that the superintendent's contract Subcommittee met on Tuesday, December 8th, where there were discussions. And the superintendent and the school committee came to a meeting of the minds where the superintendent's contract will be extended for another three years at the end of her current term, which would be June 30th, 2016. So it will be another three years from July 1st, 2016. So I think that's a very good thing. It was a unanimous discussion and agreement and vote from the members. I think it shows that this is a very high-functioning team, school committee and superintendent. The negotiations went very smooth. I think both sides are being very fair to one another. Superintendent will receive a modest increase, and I believe it is modest, in terms of salary and compensation. So I would recommend that the Committee approve the superintendent's contract that was negotiated and agreed upon in the December 8th, 2015 Subcommittee. Any further discussion or comment? Seeing none, all in favor? All right, I think that deserves a round of applause. Well, I think there's, we took one thing out of order, didn't we?
We did.
Okay, this is a very bittersweet moment, the recognition of the outgoing school committee members. We have, we have a large group leaving us. We have five members. And like I said, I think this is a very high-functioning school committee. People are diligent, work very hard, take their position seriously, and I think offer and bring, and have brought a lot to the table. I'm just gonna say a few things about each member. Mr. Jordan will be leaving us, and he, Mr. Jordan brings a lot of experience with respect to social justice, certainly issues going on with the youth in the city of Brockton. Also had a long and, a long and very successful career with the federal government, dealt a lot with contracts and negotiations, and I just think he brought that perspective and we all benefited for it. So how do you want to do this? You want to do one at a time, or do you want, why don't, you want to do one at a time?
People do one at a time, pictures, and then hopefully we can get a group picture.
Okay, so I would invite Mr. Jordan to please come up. Ozzy, thank you so much for stepping up to the plate. This is a small token of our appreciation for your wall or your office or your desk. Come on in here. Thank you, Ozzy. Appreciate it.
And just have a small token. I do want to say, as I look out this evening, I see some of the spouses of our school committee members, significant others. I know the time that they have been away, and this is just a small token to thank you for everything you've done for the children and the community. And thank you to those families that allow you to do that.
Thank you very much.
The next person we have is Alicia Jean Clark Wilson. Alicia came onto the school committee with a wonderful background in giving and participation with respect to special ed and special needs students and children. She has a very big heart. She has, she's a very successful attorney who deals with very intricate and detailed issues. And you certainly graciously provided us here in the city with your skills and especially in negotiations with me and the custodians. I thought you brought a great perspective, and I was happy to serve with you. So we want to basically give you something for your, our appreciation for your service. Why don't the guys get roses? What the heck? I'm telling you. You know, it's so sexist around here.
I love the others for the women.
All right, thank you, Alicia. Appreciate it.
And welcome to the DESE, to sharing her with us.
Okay, next we have Mr. Henningson. Mr. Henningson is the opposite of the attorneys, and basically he's a numbers person. And, you know, he, he's wonderful with respect to analyzing all of the contracts and numbers. And he did a great job raising funds and supplies for many of the schools here in Brockton. He is a busy person, you know, a comptroller, CEO, CFO, I should say, and, you know, brings a lot to the table. And, you know, was always generous with his time, you know, loves the kids, loves the programs, attends many functions. I see him out and about, you know, at all sorts of events. So we're gonna miss him, and we certainly want to express our appreciation. Ray, come on up. No roses for you, Ray. No roses.
That's all right. I'm... That's all right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next person, I don't understand at all, because the next person, in my opinion, I've told him this 100 times, I don't know why he ever stopped teaching, because he loves teaching, he loves education, he knows all of your edgy-speak lingo. That's what I call it, edgy-speak. They're talking edgy-speak to us. And, you know, certainly, you know, is coaches all the time, committed to kids. I just see Andy as, you know, as a person in the schools. I'll never understand why you're not a teacher, but you certainly brought a really interesting perspective, experience, and you were certainly a valued member of the school committee. And, you know, we're going to miss you, I'm going to miss you. So, next, Andy Robbins. Okay, Frosty. Okay, the next person, last but certainly not least, the longest-serving member on the school committee to date amongst this group is Mrs. Patricia Joyce. I see her husband in the audience. Like I said, this is going to be bittersweet. I assume it will be sweet for Greg, because he will have you around more to, I don't know about that, but, no, I was going to say, just to, to share your time and your company with, in a positive way. Mrs. Joyce also has an educational background, and you certainly knew that by the way she could dissect an issue or a presentation. I've served with Patty all my eight years. This is your 10th year, right? And I think over the years, I've gained a respect for her honest analysis. She, you know, asks great questions, she brings a lot to the table. She certainly is extremely intelligent, extremely smart, took her job, her position, very seriously, did a great job with respect to the negotiations. We're going to miss your expertise and your assistance with many of these, well, thank God it's not for another three years now we've got to worry about this thing, these items. But the only, the only fault I have is that she dragged me into the custodial negotiations. I had to take her place because of a conflict, so I won't hold that against her tonight. But I think that Patty and I have developed a friendship over the years, and certainly, like I said, a respect for her intelligence and what she brought to the committee. We are all going to miss her, because she really asks great questions and really, you know, gives love herself, and I think we all learn from many of the issues she raises. So we're going to miss Patty Joyce. But, you know, Patty's still here in Brockton, and I'm sure we will see you at many events, and I appreciate the time I've spent with you. She's all yours, Greg.
I will miss you.
If you can't get along with Mrs. Sullivan, there's something wrong with you, you know? So, okay.
Can we just thank Secret Santa? We have these beautiful Christmas stockings filled with goodies I'm happy to share, and we have no idea where they came from. So somebody likes us.
Well, that's good.
Secret Santa.
That's great. All right, well, I think we all said, is there any further business? Okay, please join us for the concert, that's where we're heading next. So, motion to, excuse me, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Okay. Thank you.
Good job.